Welcome to the November 9, 2015 Eastman City Council Meeting. If you will, make sure your phones are on mute or off. Also, council, be sure you're speaking to your mates tonight. If you will, we're gonna stand up if the prince gives his application and pledge allegiance.
Let us bow. Father, we are thankful that we can once again gather to conduct business for this city and these citizens. Father God, we pray now that we are crowned with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, and that when we disagree, we agree to disagree and respect each other. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, I need to take one off. Number one, bids to resurface the alley in back of the city hall. I need to take that off, number one. And I need to take off number six, to resurface Minner Court. I need to take that off. Go ahead, just make a motion to take that off.
Okay. Any more old business? None, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I made a motion to approve the agenda as made.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. So carry by all.
Don't you need to remove one and six?
Well, I was thinking as maybe what they just talked about.
Okay.
You want me to specify that?
I think it's clear now, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're gonna go to the sign ordinance. Oh, excuse me. We need to approve the minutes of October 26, 2015 regular meeting. Need a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. So carry by all. Now get started, yeah, maybe? Okay. Under all business, the sign ordinance.
Okay, Ms. Rachel.
I've prepared an amendment. Y'all have a copy in front of you.
Yeah, here.
All you're doing is amending section 36.2. That section previously had an offending portion in it that did not... that had to do with the content of the sign. So it was 36.2A and B. So I have proposed that we delete those sections and have in there a general application to all signs, that no signs temporary or permanent, except traffic control signs and signals, are permitted within any street or highway right-of-way. It must be 10 feet from the edge of the pavement or outside of the right-of-way, whichever is greater. That is consistent with what you have in code. And so I've just deleted the offending portions. In section 62.5, it's actually 62.5C. 62.5C had reference to signs only being allowed that has to do with what is inside the building or business. That portion has been omitted, and I've taken it out. And so you have now that you only have a sign or billboard sign or advertising sign not larger than eight square feet. That provision is also consistent with what you have now in the code. And I corrected the one for the chairman to sign with the correct reference, 62.5C. And 92.5 was a... it pertains to real estate signs and size. So we've kept, I've kept the size and location, which is a permissible regulation for the city. In section 137 also being amended, deleting that section and putting in applications and appeal provisions. The appeal provisions were, was what was in current section 137, but we didn't have any, we didn't have any guidelines on time limits once a person submitted an application for a signed permit, nor a time limit for appeals of city decisions. So current, this new section 137 has, is applications and appeals. So, and that is all. And then I've added a separability clause that wasn't in the code before. If any portion of the code is struck as being invalid and unconstitutional, then the remaining provisions will survive. If you want, if this is in accordance with what you understand we should do with amendments, then you should make a motion to adopt it, and we'll do the first and second readings. Give me questions.
Do I have any questions?
On 62.5, you've got eight square feet. Now, is that... no billboard, sign board, or advertising sign shall be permitted? Okay, when you say as an accessory structure, what is, what's that? Because now eight square feet isn't, that's four by two.
Well, that is what is in the code now, so I did not change it. An accessory structure is already defined in your code as... a subordinate building or use, the purpose of which is incidental to that of the principal use of the remaining building. So, I didn't write that part. And if Randy Knight was here, he could probably tell you how he has used it, but that's what is in your definitions. So, but it is, it is a sign that I believe would just be, other than, it would be an independent standing sign.
Okay, now, all right, because then, and I recognize that, because I remember my confusion, the next one has got exterior signs shall not exceed 100 square feet.
92.5 is in... what is it? 92.5?
Yes.
Is in, or zoning is the business district. Multi-family residential, it's in the residential section. I was just removing any reference to the business within, having the sign being restricted to be, relating to only the business within the building. So, that, I did not change the size. So I'm just, I've removed the offending, offending portion of that ordinance only. And that's in multi-family residential districts.
Okay, so now what, all right, what district is the eight square feet in? If this is in residential.
Sign or billboard.
Now see, this says not less than 50 feet from the residential zone, and then it says exterior sign shall not exceed 100 square feet. So that's 50 feet. That's not 100 square feet in a residential zone. That's, that's 100 square feet sign that's no closer. A building shall be located not less than 50 feet from a residential zone boundary line. So, and I read that's the same issue we just, we just had down there a few months ago, was where the residential, so I read my confusion is, one, here we got no billboard or sign board or advertising sign is no larger than eight square feet, which is, is nothing. And then, right underneath it, then we got exterior sign shall not exceed 100 square feet.
Well, if y'all want to change the sizes, we can do that. But my, my concern was, I did not write, I did not change anything other than the offensive parts of this code section. So, if you want to revisit the sizes, that's certainly something you can do.
You understand my confusion?
Well, it's, it's in the code as it exists now. I mean...
Which is why we're looking at changing it, because it is confusing.
I was looking at taking out the offensive portions of it.
So Mr. Pittman, would you possibly be open to adoption as, as is, and also looking at coming back and circling back and back? I know one of the things that, with some conversation before, was how some of our sign ordinances apply to Main Street, people being able to do sandwich boards and things like that. That was something that we might revisit. So is, I guess, is this a deal breaker now to where you think you change it now, or is this something we can circle back on? The main thing is now, you know, potentially can't take any sign permits until we get this moratorium lifted, something about this.
Well, we can do that, but I reckon we need to come back pretty quick, because I, like I said, I mean, I'm just, you got one section right above it that says no billboard or sign board, which would be, to me, is the same as an exterior sign shall not exceed 100 square feet. And then right at the sentence above, we got, can't be larger than eight square feet. So the question's gonna be, if somebody puts a permit in and wants to put a sign in, they will say, what size can it be? No bigger than eight foot or no bigger than 100 square foot, so.
Well, I...
I mean, and I understand the moratorium, and we need, you know, trying to get that, but we need to probably, I mean, come back and revisit this. And now we got this away, and look, and we've got some more questions, and we can really, you know, come and do, I mean, I understand the, because we moved that moratorium back on another 120 days and stuff, so we're coming, we don't need to just keep moving it further and further back, so. And I reckon I'm hoping, am I the only that it's, has any question, or... or is everybody, am I just, I mean, like I said, I may be, I'm misunderstanding something, I don't know. But that's, I mean, that's my biggest question. I mean, we got the appeals process. I know that was one, one of the issues that we never, really wasn't defined, and that's how we handled it.
I just pulled the code and looking at it, looking at it as any less entirely. When it relates to accessory structures, it's like if you had a garage, and you wanted to put a sign on the side of your garage, that's what 62.5C is relating to. And then the next one, 92.5, is a sign that you just put in a free standing sign, like how we got. So it's two different circumstances, applying that size to. Of course, that whole 62.5 is accessory structures, and C just references billboards and signs, and there's other things that it references about, you know, living quarters in garage departments and things like that, that category, so that's the difference between the two.
And one being in the residential, the 60, the...
One relating to actual signs and the other relating to accessory structures, like garages and things of that sort, living quarters.
In the residences, residential.
Does that, does that kind of help ease your mind? The difference between the two, the two sections?
Yeah.
But there are several other areas that you haven't looked at that Milton has referenced before that you could go back and look at.
There's some kind of discussion, I'm hoping that we adopt the sign ordinance.
I've got a motion to adopt the sign order, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. So carry by all. Now we go into new business or monthly fire report.
From month of October, we had 45 calls, 27 in the city, and 18 out of the county. That was a fairly slow month. We had one small fire from the electric shore. We got another one just out, 117, just out Citlens on the right, just caused from somebody throwing a cigarette in a flower pot, did damage to the porch in the back of the house. Brush fires were down quite a bit, one due to all the rain we've had. Had three vehicle fires. Had one gas leak, a bunch of tank appeared, flash news, and we passed that tank up, and it gave a spill, and got them out of there. Had 15 medical calls and 11 vehicle accident. Six ADT or electronic alarms, check smoke, smell in three different structures. Had one lifeline landed, landing the public service was, we had a fire truck in the east Halloween festival in our county with kids, and we had one fire drill at the Echo Hill.
Do we have any questions for call? Thank you, call. Okay, number two, monthly police department, report, Ms. Becky, please.
Okay, for the month of October, we controlled 11,145 miles, used 1,032 gallons of gas, and answered 1,145 calls, and were 13 reds.
I just wanted to mention that I've been getting a lot of calls both ways over in that neighborhood. I guess everyone feeling like there's an increased police presence, so with everyone complaining, must be doing something right.
My bad, thank you. Another thing I'd like to bring up tonight, as y'all all know, we've had several vehicles that have got, we've red. One of the vehicles that we're using now has gotta have a lot of work done to it. In the past, we've had two vehicles that we've had insurance claims on. One of the other vehicles is gonna be, one of the new ones that just got raped the other night. That's another person's fault, so that way their insurance will have to replace it. But the one, we really do need one now, and right now, we've probably got, what, $17,000 toward a new vehicle from insurance, two other vehicles that were red. And I was gonna ask you guys if you would consider letting us go ahead and get another vehicle to replace one of the three that we got out right now.
Well, if you need it, I think we need to get it. We don't need to be, have as short as a car, nothing to go with.
But right now, we have one car that, most of the cars that we saw was 2,008, and we didn't even get like $1,000, it's just gonna take over $1,200 just to fix that car. And I just can't see putting that kind of money in it, and we could put this toward a new one.
Any more questions for Ms. Becky? So you want a motion to pass the, you, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and get that one car now, is what you're asking for right now?
Yes.
And then later on, we can look and see what else we can do.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, raise your hand.
I just had one question.
Okay.
Do we call, what was the total charge for just getting a truck and outfitting? Do we call whatever range was on there?
On the police vehicle?
Yeah, for the newer model.
The newer model that we have, just the basic car, it's 27,000.
27,000.
Just the basic car. Now, your equipment that we're gonna run in, as you know, I can buy a lot of equipment myself with the condemned money that we got off of the verb case, right? So I mean, we're willing to do that, but now a lot of the equipment on Merritt's car that was raped the other night, we can transfer it over to the new car. The light bar is still good. It did mess up the radar, but the radio's good, it's just, you know, just gonna have to just try it out and see what we can get. But basic car is 27,000.
And we were expecting about 17,000 insurance money?
That's right.
Okay.
We're looking between 9,000 and 10,000.
Y'all, please quit, start looking for crazy drivers out there.
We found him here, like.
Bobby, it's not you, I'd like you to make that motion again.
All right, I'll make a motion to go ahead and get the one car she's asking for now, and later we can see about what we need to get later on.
Okay.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, raise your hand. So carry by all. Dodge Historical Society, Mr. Danny Pigg.
The Historical Society...
You come on, you did come on up again, Danny. If you don't mind, tell us who you are and all that gets to that.
The Historical Society is experiencing a cash drain. Here in the last few days, I've paid the insurance, which was about $145,000. I paid the mortgage, which is $1,600, and we bought a refrigerator, which cost $495,000. In addition to that, we've got operating expenses. So I'm here to ask you if you would help us with $3,500 per year, if you would commit to that for a year. That's what the county has awarded us, 3,500 a year. So I'm asking if you would do the same as the county. That's my request.
Questions?
How much did we, did we do something like this last year? How much was it that we did last year?
3,400.
3,400? Okay. Mr. Pigg, could you just give me a kind of a recent analysis of what, what your Historical Society does, and how is that gonna help?
Its primary activity is to restore and upkeep the Eastman House, which was known as the Book House before, before the Historical Society acquired that. We want to make a museum there, it's, we consider it to be a museum piece, and different ones come and go through the house, and that's, that's what, primarily what we do. And we had a wine and cheese party last month. That was real successful. We made $3,500 on it. We're planning to spend the 3,500 upstairs on furniture.
Okay, so these funds would necessarily be for operating, or be for...
Yeah, operating.
This is for operating with lights, water, or is this for furniture?
Lights, water, no furniture.
Okay. So, oh, you're saying the cheese, that, that was funds, rings, to help with that?
Yeah.
So this funding was for operating?
Any more questions? All righty. Do I hear a motion to approve the money that Dodge Historical Society wants?
I'll make that motion. We need the help of as much as we can. We're helping everybody else, and every chance we get, the library and some other places, so we need to help y'all too.
That was 3,500, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear a second? All in favor, raise your hand. Anybody against? One for, one against. All righty, pass, thank you.
Would you, would you agree to an amendment? You want me to come back?
Now, my opinion is for you to come back.
Sorry, I was under the impression that motion, that was for amendment, wasn't that what you're asking?
That's what my motion was for.
Oh, okay.
Amendment?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, well, they pass, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next on agenda, approve the bill for October 26 through November 9.
And y'all all have copies of, and everything's in order.
Do I hear a motion to approve the bill?
I'll make a motion to approve the bill.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. So carry by all. Next on agenda, repair culvert on Ward Street near Russell Avenue.
Okay, and I think y'all have copies of the media. Let me be sure that y'all have copies. Everybody has copies, okay? And yes, the head wall work, and we're doing the CDVG project over in Bacon Heights now, and it's coming across the main highway, Ward Street, and we're calling it head wall work. That's what you're saying in your brushier hair. And the cost of it's gonna be $23,150. And we're calling it head wall work. It includes a joint, a pipe, and a driveway, nail, concrete apron, four inch boards, and rip route placement and ditch and round the head wall. And I'm considering this an emergency project, so if y'all will just look at your pictures, you can kind of tail.
What that light, tail it off.
Yeah. So, and that's what the pictures that we have taken, Mr. Troy with our engineers has taken this picture, and you can look, see, is in our need. I'm afraid the road's gonna fall in if we don't get it fixed.
So is that the road right there?
Yes, sir.
That's the ready.
So I'm saying let's do it as an emergency, it's not in the CDVG project, but we're gonna have to fix it. We don't really have a choice, so.
I think my only hesitation with looking at this as an emergency situation is that Bacon Heights has kind of presented a situation where once we kind of got in there, we've discovered some things that threaten to raise the project costs, and just like in that last situation where I heard it kind of voiced against us, you know, adding additional money because we had made concessions, and how we did it, I just fear that we're gonna set that up again to where this is what it looks like. We approve that, we get started, and then we have to come back and kind of look, look at the person with a straight face that's asking us to raise the project costs.
Right, and this was not in the project start.
I understand. So I would put this out for a full bid process, delayed, what, a month, or how long would that possibly take?
I mean, if that's what y'all want to do, we can.
I think that's from my comfort, though, there's a little going in, but I don't know the board's position. Just so that we have that freedom, if we get into this and there's some, some issues that pop up, you know, it's just that, that perception.
Right.
More questions?
I would make a motion that we bid out and repair for the culvert on Ward Street near Russell Avenue.
Do I, do I hear a second? Questions? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand.
My favor.
So carry by all. Number seven, Ms. Pigg. Prove to have Thanksgiving lunch and turkey gift cards.
Right. Ms. Epple, do you have the calendar? And I think last year, we give, give cards to the employees, $20, $20 for them to get a turkey or whatever, so. We just need to set a date for the luncheon.
What, you remember what the date, what date we used last year?
I don't have that.
We don't, we don't have. About Thursday?
Let's see, Thanksgiving Day is, it's on the 26th, because it's on the 13th of Thursday.
What about the 19th?
Okay, that's on the Thursday too, the week before Thanksgiving.
Yeah. It would give time to go buy the turkey.
Yeah. Y'all just pick.
Y'all got a choice?
I have a calendar, which I, I don't think it'll, it'll matter, it'll conflict, but isn't a senior citizen much?
It is.
It's a 3/3.
That is right, you're right.
3/3. Third, third.
Yeah, they're gonna have it a week early, I think.
Wednesday, Sam.
Wednesday, eighteen?
Eighteen.
Is that going anywhere for you, Miss Prin?
Cause that's up there.
Yes, twelve, twelve to one.
All right, if, I need a motion to approve Thanksgiving lunch and the gift cards for November the eighteenth, twelve o'clock.
I'll make that motion.
All right, do I hear a second? Second, all in favor, raise your hand.
Okay, it's November the eighteenth, twelve o'clock.
Number eight, month of fourth given by state September, here in front of you.
Okay, everything's in order. That Tony Bear, Bear Hill, and that's the Pizza Inn investor, or former Pizza Inn, I guess they're gonna call that Pizza Inn.
Y'all think we're all right?
Uh-huh, everything's up.
You make the motion.
Got a motion to approve the bill and expect your recommendation. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Look here by all. Okay, city manager's report.
Okay, we have a GMA district ninth meeting, Thursday, November the twelfth. That's in Dublin, Georgia. I think most of y'all have signed up, haven't they? Miss, I think all of y'all have signed up. Mr. Bobby?
I don't know.
Okay, so I think everything's in order there. The theater, they're gonna have the function downtown. Just wanna know how many tables. The tables will be two hundred dollars, and they're gonna sell meals, and I think they'll be seven dollars per meal, so y'all need to, I guess, decide how many is going, so we can sign up for y'all to go to the function.
What's that day?
Let's see, that's, six-thirty? Let's see, hold on a second, I got some address right there here. It's November twenty-one. It was on the twenty-first? Saturday? Twenty-first is, is that November? So, that is the Saturday, it's on a Saturday, yes.
She said six o'clock. You said six o'clock.
I think I read, yeah, yeah.
We just need to let you know.
The disciple knows, so she can, we can assign how many tables we need to get.
Okay.
I would ask too, if we reach out to the DDA and see if they may be interested in a second table.
Okay.
Since, you know, I sit in there back in the woods.
Okay. Okay, you get them to assign them tables. Okay, and the only thing I have on there is I'd like for council to know, and which most of you do know, that I'm retiring the thirty-first of December. So, I've enjoyed working with everybody, so I'll be here around till then, so if any of y'all need anything, I'll be more than welcome to do it, but I've been here to December thirty-first, twenty-fifteen, so.
I've been here?
No, 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 not twenty-sixteen.
Twenty-septeen.
So, no, no, no.
How many years?
Forty-eight years.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. I have worked under, Mr. John Elley hired me June the twenty-seventh, nineteen sixty-seven. So, I've worked under Mr. Etta, I've worked under Mr. Tarks, and Mr. Wright. So, I've had forty-eight years of service, wonderful. I went through, or we've done projects that we finished, and as y'all see now, we've cut so many projects that are still undergoing, so, and they'll be, they'll be finished, and I don't know what councils are gonna decide to do, and when they will open it up, or what they will do, but I'm leaving it in their hands, and I know it'll be carried on good. So, Mr. Ronnie, I won't be working with y'all again, so you'll take the seat January the first, so, but I'll be coming back and visiting, so.
All right. We're not talking about that enough.
Okay.
Okay.
And the next thing is executive session.
I'll be, other business, I got other business, county.
Okay, all right, I'll let you, I'll let you take care of that.
Okay, Ms. Prin, do you have anything you'd like to bring up?
I don't have anything.
All right, Mr. Milton?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that I did present that intergovernmental agreement about the building services to the county. They think we stepped up to it, and wanted to take some time to review it. They asked for a potential date that we might look to go live with them. I told them that we kind of were looking for around the first of the year, and so they took that into consideration, so I expect, you know, they'll revisit that in their coming meetings, and hopefully have a final agreement in place by January. And that's all that.
That it? Mr. Bobby?
Yeah, I'm also retired, December thirty-first. Right, Ronnie?
Yes, sir.
And I had a great run on it, and I worked with B for thirteen years as police chief, so I know she's been a good employee for a long time, and we're gonna miss her.
Betty?
Ronnie, you just cleared the whole building.
I guess.
I would, I'd just like to say, Ms. Pickett, I had been off and on with the city working, and she's been here, but it's, I remember when I first got elected eight years ago, and the actions that transpired two or three weeks after all of that, and, oh, I'd just like to say, it has been a pleasure working with you, and we all dove in, and I really, it wasn't our first meeting or two, we had to get with having to build a new treatment plan, and the word having, I had stress because there was no good sense of us about it, and I feel we have, we have really done a lot in the city. We have a lot going on, and I just, for me, just, I'd say I really have appreciated what you've put in and done, and I know it ain't been easy at times, but thank you for your job, Willie.
And thank y'all, too.
Uh, I was in a meeting this past week down in St. Silens with the RDC Commission Board, and one of the speakers was the man you man over at the DOT, and the first question he was asked was about a roundabout. So, I listened to him, and he, he's all for roundabouts. He says, in the place he lives at, he tried to get a red light, and he said, I'm over DOT, and I can't even get a red light. And he also said he had a lot of information on a roundabout, and he's gonna send that to Brett, and Brett's gonna give it to me, so we'll have more information on the roundabout. And the comfort was real good, and he said, any help we needed, just let him know. And that's all I got.
Okay, all the participations, if they'd like to come up, three to five minutes, please come up. First of all, Charles Williams, you come up, you, right now, a good one, right now, wanna hear?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, and Ms. Pickett, I can't imagine the city of E without Ms. Pickett, cause you've been here a long time. So, always a privilege to bring you a check, and I have the October rent payment on the Monday program, so I'll hand that to you, and that's always nice to be able to do. Uh, second thing, most everybody, I think everybody on the council has received a pre-flight document, a project that we're working on to try to help us all have input on economic decisions that will involve businesses that are looking at us. I've heard back from Milton, and I've heard back from Mr. Dawson, haven't heard back from Bobby, but I did hear back from Ronnie, so he's excited about it. Buddy, I haven't heard from you, I hadn't heard from you, but we need to talk about that. Got a meeting tomorrow, Wednesday afternoon, at five o'clock, very short meeting, to show you how this works, and make it so that each of us can contribute from home or wherever you are, if you have iPhone, whatever. You can look up a number and comment on it, that way it'll make it easier for us to put together the packages. I appreciate the input that I have gotten from you two guys.
Did you send out a letter?
I did. I sent out, I sent out an email.
So, I don't have emails, so I, Ronnie got it.
Ronnie got it.
Okay, Ronnie got it.
But you're welcome to go if you wanna see.
No, no, I'll be retired.
The next thing, Georgia Military College will be tomorrow night, they'll be with us tomorrow night at the Chamber at six o'clock to talk about the things that they're looking at in terms of locating an additional branch of Georgia Military College here. This is important, this is an open forum and a community support meeting. If you could be there, please do so, six o'clock tomorrow night at the Chamber, probably be about an hour, have some refreshments there for you, but you need General Kirk Rahut and possibly General Caldwell, the fresher of the school, and understand what they're looking for. We want them to come here because they would occupy the Mercer Annex if they come, so this is a very, very important meeting for folks to participate in. And, and, that's it, I've already said something about Ms. Pickett, and I can't imagine anything without you, you've been here a long time.
I'm gonna be here.
I know you are, but I'm talking about willing to over and see about this. The city has been so cooperative with the Development Authority to take care of little projects that need to be done, cutting grass here, fixing a hole there, and just seeing about things. We really appreciate it. Anybody have any questions, or what, uh, wrong? Thank you for your participation and support. Ronnie, you got a question? You got that look on your face. All right, good, well, thank you.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's been, appreciate it.
I do wanna go ahead and weapons junior, how, one of our commissioners, I mean, his wife, junior, would you like to say anything? You just come to see her, say bye?
Yeah.
I thought I figured, okay.
Take me out to supper.
Take you out to supper. Take us out to supper. Would anybody else like to come up and speak, three to five minutes? Anybody? Uh, Ms. Brandon, would you step up, please?
Yeah. I don't even want to get in my, I just get on the front row. I just want all the councils to meet, Mr. Brandon Briscoe, he's been with us about four to five weeks, so he is going to be over the street department, so any of the complaints that y'all have, I guess you'll notify Brandon. I'm cutting up, but anyway, he's, he's been a wonderful employee so far, so he'll be taking that role of the street department supervisor.
I do wanna thank each and every one of y'all for giving the opportunity to take this position, and, like I said, my goal is just to make it better for every system in Eastman. Like I said, I used to live out in the county, but like I said, Eastman's still my home, so, like I said, you know, anything I could do to help each and every one of y'all, I'd be more than happy to. Like I said, it may take me a day to get to you, but I'll get around to it, but I did want it to meet and greet, and I've met most of y'all already, and, like I said, you see me out there, we working, so if we ever get some sunshine, this rain's killing us, but thank y'all again.
Right, now, before you go, I'd like to say something I've already told you to your face. He does a great job of patching jobs, I don't know if you've noticed, but in the past, they've been sitting up that high, some of them are that low, below it, and he's got about as even as I've ever seen about this. They just, it's riding on smooth, baby, man. But I appreciate the job you're doing, you're taking your time with it.
Thank you very much, and like I said, I, you know, I've always, in the past, like I said, any job that I do is like, like an artist, you sign your name to it, and it goes with you, so, and that's what I try to tell the guys I work with, so, I appreciate the opportunity.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon, appreciate it. Okay, next thing on agenda, executive session, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion, Lawrence, executive session.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Look here by all. We'll be back shortly. I need a motion to come out of executive session, go back into the regular meeting. So. Do I hear a second? I got two motions. Buddy motioned, Mr. Prince, do I get a second? You got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, all righty, in the meeting, executive session, we just had no, none of that illegal, it was all on personnel matters. I have a motion to allow city manager to move forward any recommendations from GMA attorney to resolve personal issues impending work with con claim, representative Ronnie Drake.
Sir. You made a motion.
I make that motion. You got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Look here by all. Okay, next thing we discuss, I'm gonna let Mr. Milton bring that up.
All right, Mr. Chairman, in response to our city manager's desire to retire on December thirty-first, I make a motion that we advertise the following vacancy for city manager and the legal organ, the Dodge County News, the Department of Labor, as in our customary practice, and with the Georgia Local Government Access website, with application deadline of Wednesday, December second, two thousand fifteen. If that motion was up there, I'll take another stab at it.
All right, we got a motion to proceed and applications for new city manager, do I hear a second?
Sir.
Now, second, all in favor, raise your hand. Look here by all.
Takes care of everything?
Uh, does anybody else have anything? If not, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Need a second?
Second.
Look here by all.